I will call the Clay County Planning Commission in order. Role call has been taken. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion, motion made by Joel, second by Laura. All in favor, single by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Approval of minutes from September seventeenth, twenty twenty four. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion made by Laura, second by Ashley. All in favor, single by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Approval of minutes. Citizens to be heard. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on something that is not on the agenda? Is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak on something that is not on the agenda? One last time, is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak on something not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to public hearings. Michael and Diane Zarling request for an interim use permit. The applicant is seeking an interim use permit for a second dwelling on parcel, on a parcel at ten seven three eight nineteenth Street South, Moorhead, Minnesota, five six five six zero. Parcel ID nineteen dot zero two eight dot four two zero one in part of this west half of the southeast corridor of section twenty eight Kurt's Township. Do you have a motion to open the public hearing?
Hello.
Motion made by Joel, Paul, second by Ashley. All in favor, single by saying aye. Opposed, Matt. Public hearing is now open.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is an interim use permit request for a second dwelling on a parcel. The location is just on the east side of Rusted, south of Moorhead. Zoning of this parcel, the base zoning district is agricultural general, right next to Rusted, which is zoned agricultural service center. And a temporary second dwelling on a parcel with, that already has a primary residence on it is permitted as an interim use in this zoning district. So the request is to place a double wide manufactured home on the parcel, already has a primary residence. The applicants and the property owners, their intention is to move into the manufactured home and then their son and granddaughter would move into the house. So from our code, you can have a second dwelling on a parcel to be used by a parent, grandparent, children, sibling, by blood, marriage, adoption, other special relationships. The dwelling must be a manufactured home, not be placed on a permanent foundation, must have a septic system that meets county health requirements, must share a common well with the principal dwelling. Can't have more than one on an allowed, on a parcel, and the parcel must be at least five acre size. And this request would be, have the potential to meet all of these criteria. I would note, just take this opportunity to note that as part of the development code update too, which we can also talk about is looking at adding something called an accessory dwelling unit, which is kind of a more, I guess, modernized version of this that just allows for more flexibility in these types of arrangements. As opposed to being limited to this, you know, type of dwelling and things like that. And requiring an interim use permit. So some additional property information, there is an existing manufactured home on the property, could likely have been used as a second residence. That would need to be removed. There are approximately twenty seven vehicles, there's boats, there's other kind of odds and adds stored outdoors. We do have standards for the storage of automobiles and other items that could fall under our county code for eight dash six dash two three, the outdoor storage automobiles. And then we also have eight dash five dash one nuisance conditions as well. And so these standards are as follows. If you're storing an automobile outside, if you have any, if you're storing them indoors and they're not licensed, they're not insured or roadworthy, you can store as many as the building can hold. Right now, they have, that's vehicles that don't meet those standards are limited to two. They have to meet setbacks and screening, and you just can't store automobile parts. Something that all, this could also potentially change as part of our code update as well, I should note. There's also the National Wetlands Inventory. Something we review for every request that comes before you. Indicated the presence of wetlands on this property, on the north side and the south side. There appears, according to this aerial imagery, the aerial imagery to be vehicles would might be in a wetland. Putting vehicles in a wetland would be considered a violation of the Wetlands Conservation Act. This, so they would need to be removed because they'd be considered fill. Essentially, you cannot fill a wetland. This would need to be verified though, for if there is actually a wetland there or not. So the comprehensive and transportation plan goals and objectives that are related to this request. We have housing goals and objectives. We had to, a goal to support additional options that give people in all life stages. And of all economic means viable choices for safe, stable and affordable homes and allowing for a temporary second dwelling on a parcel supports this goal. We also have a goal to recognize the diversity of living and working arrangements in the unincorporated areas of Clay County. A response to, or how that goal relates to this request would be that family circumstances and situations may necessitate living arrangements not currently permitted by right in the Clay County Development Code. And permitting a temporary second dwelling on a single family residential parcel provides means for family members to live in close proximity to one another. We also have an objective under this goal to recognize multi-generational and temporary agricultural working, living arrangements by permitting accessory dwelling units on properties that can adequately provide for water and sewer. And this proposal would meet those, those standards. The second dwelling would need to share a well with the primary residence and have a separate permitted septic system. Any questions for me at all on this request?
So I have one question, Matt.
Yes.
If they would just split the property and add a second dwelling on that, if they do, if they do a split instead of this, they would be able to do it just by you guys signing it, right?
Yep, if they wanted to actually, yes, they could do that.
There's, I mean, in that quarter, quarter, there's, there isn't two houses already in that quarter, quarter.
No, if they wanted to subdivide the property.
They'd want to sub.
Be done that way. Yep.
Anybody else have any questions for Matt?
If they remove the one property, I mean, the one mobile and put another one on its place, is that correct? Is that the plan? Didn't you say there is one mobile?
Yeah, and I think it's salvage. There would be, need to be moved off.
Well, the place of where this one will be going, there is no septic system there yet, or?
That's my understanding, yeah.
So that'll be a conditioner or whatever.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions for Matt? Or have you heard anything from the township?
I did hear from the township. They just had questions about residential density. It's in Kurt's Township, they like to keep the residential density to one per, one residence per quarter, quarter. Hearing this request though, it made sense to them. They had initially said that the property owners, Mr. and Mrs. Zarling, would have to go and obtain a variance to their rules, but they did all talk and they said that if this permit were to be issued, that they would just go ahead and approve the variance without a meeting or anything like that. So it would be approved by the township.
Anybody else have questions for Matt? Would the applicant like to come up and speak? If you want to come up to the podium there?
I've never done anything like this, so I have no idea what to even.
Well, first state your name for the record.
Diane Zarling.
Alright. So I have a question for you. You plan on moving on a manufactured home?
Yeah.
Is, is there, is there a second septic system on that property?
Not as of yet. I talked to Kent. And we're working with him right now, but I didn't want to do anything until I.
No, that make, that makes perfect sense.
Till I know what's gonna happen.
Alright. Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Thank you for coming in. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this matter? Anybody in the audience wishes to speak on this matter? One last time, anybody in the audience want to speak on this matter? Hearing none. Does anybody have any questions for Matt or the applicant? If not, do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made by Joel, second by Laura. All in favor, single by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Public hearing is now closed. We will go through findings and facts. Number one, effect of use. In granting the interim use, the planning commission shall consider the effect of the proposed use upon the health, safety, morals and general welfare of occupants surrounding lands, existing and anticipated land use, traffic conditions including parking facilities or adjacent streets and land, and the effect of agricultural usage and values of property and scenic views in the surrounding areas, and the effect of the proposed use on existing comprehensive plans. Number two, the enjoyment, the use and enjoyment of other property. The interim use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity of the purpose already permitted and sustainably diminish or impair property values within the immediate vicinity. The use would not impact the use and enjoyment of other property, nor should it impact the property values in the vicinity. Number three, development of surrounding properties. The establishment of the interim use will not impede the normal or orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant properties for use predominant in the area. Number four, utilities, access roads, drainage, off-street parking and loading spaces. Adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide utilities, access roads, drainage, off-street parking and loading spaces. Number five, nuisance conditions. Adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, water pollution, soil erosion, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance and to control lighted signs or other lights in such manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result. Number six, burden on public services. The use will not create excess burden on parks, streets, schools, water supply, sanitary sewers, storm sewers and other public facilities or utilities which serve or are proposed to serve the area. Number seven, compatibility. The use will be sufficiently compatible or separated by distance or screening from adjacent agricultural zoned or used land so that existing homes will not be, will not be depreciated in value and there'll be no deterrence to agricultural use of said land. The use would mostly be screened by trees and separated by distance from adjacent agriculture and residential land. Number eight, appearance of structure in sight. The structure in sight shall have an appearance that will not have an adverse effect upon adjacent residential properties. There are no adjacent residential properties. Number nine, relationship to overall needs. The use is in the opinion of the planning commission reasonably related to the overall needs of the district and of the existing land use. In case of a floodplain area, the proof of the location is necessary for facility operation and the alternative sites not sustainable for flooding or are not available. Number ten, con, consistence with the ordinance. The use is inconsistent with the purpose of this ordinance, with the purpose of the zoning district in which the applicant intends to locate the proposed use. The use is inconsistent with the Clay County Development Code as it is permitted as an interim use in the agricultural general zoned district. Number eleven, conflict with the comprehensive plan. The use in conflict with the comprehensive plan, if any, of this township, city or county. Twelve, traffic hazards, congestion and floodplain areas. The use will not cause traffic hazards or congestion in floodplain areas and has excess during flooding for ordinary and emergency vehicles. Number thirteen, existing businesses. Existing businesses nearby will not be adversely affected because of curtailment trade brought about by intrusion of noise, glare or general unsightliness. Then Matt has six conditions here. Matt, you want to go over those six recommended conditions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. So recommended conditions for this permit would be, number one, applicant must abide, must abide by the provisions of the Clay County Land Development Ordinance. Two, method of waste disposal would be approved by Clay County Environmental Health. Three, existing mobile home to be removed from the property within thirty days of issuance of this permit. Four, the permit expires when one of the following conditions are met. There's a change in parcel ownership. Second dwelling is no longer occupied or other other occupied by parent, grandparents, children, siblings, by blood, marriage, adoption or other special relationships consistent with the purpose. Five, prior to placing the second residence on the parcel, the applicant must reach out to the Wetland Conservation Act Coordinator to resolve any potential wetland violations. Think that should be fairly simple, have Tony Nelson come out, determine if there's a wetland. It's one of those things too, where if it is, you're just basically moving, moving the cars off, should be out of that wetland area. So that should be pretty simple. And then also to work with Clay County Planning and Zoning Staff to determine whether or not the property is in compliance with our standards for the outdoor storage automobiles. And if it is not found, just have the property become compliant within one year of issuance of this permit or the permit will expire. I should note too, with that, been working on a number of properties in the county with regards to this compliance with this specific standard or regulation in our ordinance. We do have a abandoned automobile or junk automobile program through our solid waste department where you can get someone to come out and remove those vehicles. So that is, that's something that we offer through the county. Any questions on the conditions?
I have one comment on condition three.
Yes.
Instead of giving them thirty days from the issue of this permit, should we do it? They can't place the new home until that, that old mobile home is gone. But, I mean, to get a contractor within thirty days, I would think would be very tough to dispose of.
Sure. You could make it.
Before that new one arrives, that old one has to be hauled off.
Yeah, you could do that.
Then that gives them time to get it cleaned up and, because thirty days to get a contractor in, if that's who's gonna do it, or find someone to clean up something like that. Or if you're gonna demo it, or, I mean, that's, that's not much time in that world. What does everybody think on that? I mean?
Well, I'm glad, I was one of my notes and, and I was gonna refer to number six. So why aren't they required to be compliant before the permit? Is granted, in like everybody else in other situations?
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Hildebrand, I think this is one of those situations where you're dealing with someone, I guess, giving folks a little bit more grace when dealing with a living situation where it's gonna impact where they might be living. And so, I mean, it's ultimately up to the, the planning commission, but just getting them into a place where they can live, you know, for the, for the winter and giving them the opportunity. Whereas, you know, if it's a if it's not, if it's a request, it's not related to, you know, having a, having a shelter and having a dwelling. I think maybe that would be a different case, but that's essentially why the recommendation would be to give them a year. That makes sense.
So Matt, going back to, back to the autos on the property, when you had that up on the screen there, whatever the rules were, you, you made a comment, something in that might be changing in the code. What, what, what is that specifically that would correlate to what is happening?
It's possible, it could be relaxed a little bit, just because it's pretty strict right now for rural areas.
And, and do you expect that new ordinance to be in place within an issue?
Yes.
That's another reason, I think, I'd give a little latitude to this. Let me see.
Well, and Mr. Chair, we don't, we haven't been out to, and Mr. Hildebrand, we have not been out to the property, so we don't know the state if they're licensed, insured, or how many cars are licensed or insured or roadworthy. So we would, we would have to make that determination too. We haven't made that determination yet.
So going back to my number three there, are we in favor on changing that? Or leave it the way Matt has it?
I would agree with you. I think giving them a little bit more time to get that out and exactly what you said, don't put the new one on until the old one's off. I think that's, that's fair enough. And then I just wanted to ask too about number six, since we talked about it. Are they on a heavily trafficked road where people are seeing all of these cars? And I see that they have a lot of trees out front where they're, you know, is it blocked already?
You can see them from the property. I'll just pull up Rusted here.
I mean, I think that would be a reason to be more lenient, I guess, in this case, if it's not something that everybody drives by every day.
And just, yeah, visible from one hundred and tenth Avenue here, and then you just have a lot of residential across the railroad right away as well. And this is the property.
And we've certainly been down this road before with abandoned vehicles, so to speak. And once again, I, I just think I'd be in for them to have their new place put on there, they're gonna have to have a certified septic system.
Yep. Correct.
So I mean, this whole thing's gonna take a little bit of time.
Correct.
I don't know, unless they have a
Someone lined up.
Someone lined up already. Fine. I'm debating on you. I'm just thinking about what you're suggesting, but I am.
And, and Mr. Chair too, if you have any clarifying questions for the applicant, you can, I know the public hearing is closed, but you certainly can ask them.
I don't, I don't have any other, unless, come, I got a question, I guess, yeah, come up. State your name again for the record, please.
Diane Zarling.
Do you have a septic installer ready, lined up to go and?
I've talked to a gentleman and I've talked to Kent and we're waiting on this to hear what we can.
To move forward on that.
Yes. My, the land is cleared. I'm ready to go for where the trailer is gonna be. It's, it's cleared off. It's ready to set the pillars.
Pillars.
Pillar things, yep. So that area that is going in is all cleared off.
Have you talked to anybody about removing the old trailer house?
We moved it to the one side for right now because I, I can't, I don't know who to get to move it. I mean, I don't Our thought was we're gonna just tear it apart and work on tearing it down.
Tearing it down and hauling it out.
Or out of the bottom of it or something.
Have you reached out to the Southern Waters, particularly the, our whack-a-person, Tony Nelson, in the last thirty days to check out the wetlands?
I didn't know I had wetlands. I've lived there almost forty years. Didn't know that. Didn't hear, I didn't have any idea about that until he told me.
It might not either.
Correct. That, that, that is, and in a lot of cases it isn't, but there's.
Tony will find that out though, when he.
Yeah, I understand. That's more about just moving the cars.
It's an easy fix.
Yes, really. Very simple.
And, and just another thing to say is, the road that we actually live on is a dead end. I mean, it's just me and one other person down the road. Everybody else is, I call it the right side of the tracks, but my husband says it's the wrong side, so, you know. And otherwise, there's just field all the way around us.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comment? Do you have a motion to approve with conditions?
Mr. Chair, did, was there a clarification on number three? On how you wanted that to be worded?
I, I would word it as, no, I'm not making a motion, but I would word it as, before the new one shows up, the old one has to be demolished or hauled off. That gives them some time, because it, I mean, you're gonna demo it, that's gonna take time, or finding someone to haul it off is gonna take some time. I believe anyways. Now, I don't.
So, we are closed, Stan, are we?
No.
Okay.
Well, the public hearing is closed, but we can talk, we can ask them questions.
Okay.
Yeah. You wanna come back up to the microphone, please?
Do you have your new trailer lined up to come on the property about what time?
I have a purchase agreement for a trailer. However, it's on contingency that I get your permission to put it out there. So yes, I have it already.
And what is if, if it were perfect world?
Yep.
When would you like to have that trailer on your property?
Seven days after I pour my pillars.
Which is this fall or next spring?
We're hoping to get it all done this fall. He said he can move it within seven to ten days after the pillars have been put in.
And you understand that you would need a certified public, or septic system hooked up to the property?
Yes.
And the well before you can inhabit it.
We have the well. I have the point of entry for a well to be used. I have one of those fire hydrants out there.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, I got you. Okay.
So you, have you talked to the person that's bringing the new mobile home or home in there to towel off the old one?
He doesn't, it's from Burmangee. Going out of his business. Yeah, the trailer that is in question is, is not anything that's livable in. It got destroyed in the winds.
The wind took the roof off of it.
Right.
So, I mean, it's out of the way right now. It's just a matter of getting it tore down or finding somebody that will.
Holler it off or.
Holler it off.
Or tear it down for you, yeah.
And it is not easy. I went through it at the lake already.
Yep. Dave?
Second, ma'am. I understand Commissioner Barr's number three idea of, of getting it removed, but it looks like you're gonna probably get the trailer on there sooner than you're able to get somebody to pull the old one off. I think we should give them some time.
Yeah.
You know, thirty days isn't the magic number.
No.
We could have it whatever we want it to be. I mean, they got so much, there's so much moving parts now that I think they just need to focus on getting something set up. You know, because it's getting cold soon, so.
It is.
And I don't know, is, does thirty days seem like a reasonable amount of time to to remove it or?
I have no idea. I was hoping I would have until.
It's hard to answer that question.
Yeah, until next spring to do it.
The other, the other option it would be is just get rid of three completely and just put six on there, because you'd have to have that cleaned up with six, correct?
You could just roll, that was gonna be.
Roll that into number six.
Into number six, yeah.
Give them a year to clean.
One year to.
Yeah, to clean up that old trailer house.
That'd be awesome.
I think that's reasonable.
That's reasonable.
Just for clarity, can I just add one? Would you be fine with just saying within one year?
With one year?
Can I ask a question on those cars? If they're licensed with that anti, or forever licensed, yeah, are they then legal?
They're insured, I believe. If they're insured, yep, and roadworthy.
If you could go to the microphone and.
I think all but about, probably two of them out back, all in the age bracket of being collector cars. So, and there is a couple of them for sure that are, we already got collector plates on them. And they are, they're definitely collectors. And we got one up front too, there. It's definitely a collector. It's a, it's a pickup that there was only six hundred of them made in the year.
Yeah.
What I've been told.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to work with the Zarlings and on that condition and help them out in any way possible, just verifying that. And then also assisting with any of the vehicles that would need to.
That don't fall into that.
Yes, exactly. Happy to be, yep.
There's a lot of them that I do want to get rid of. Because.
Yeah.
You know, they're just.
Yep.
We're probably not gonna do anything with them.
Yep.
Yeah, they, they all fit in that, that age bracket.
Thank you. Sounds like, sounds like a plan will be able to be worked out.
Yep.
Mr. Chair?
May I ask who's speaking?
This is Kent Severson with Clay County Environmental Health.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, just wanted to add in that the Zarlings have been in touch with me and we've discussed septic needs there. So they're well aware of that. And, you know, as far as timeline, if things didn't quite happen for a septic system this fall, it is a kind of a general practice that um, if things didn't quite happen for a septic system this fall, uh, it is kind of a general practice that there's usually time for an installer to get a tank in the ground at least before it frees up. And that, you know, would be used as part of the system the following season when it's ready to be installed. So there's some very, uh, doable things there as far as septic goes. Thank you.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you. Do you have a motion? Approve with conditions one through six?
A motion to approve, conditions one through six with that change to number three being one year instead of thirty days.
Motion made by Ashley.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, single by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Interim use granted.
We're kinda looking what maybe their next step is.
Thanks, Paul. All right, we'll be moving on to the next public hearing. Scott and Chris, Chris Mathie petition for rezoning. The applicant is seeking a petition to rezone the property from Agricultural General to Highway Commercial to continue to allow it for a commercial business on parcel I, the zero four dot zero five zero dot zero two hundred, lot twenty, block one. Auditor's subdivision, CD zero four zero five zero, sub lot D, in section seven. Township, Eglin Township. Do you have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made by Joel, second by Brad. All in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Public hearing is now open.
So, Mr. Chair, this is a petition for rezoning, uh, property from Agricultural General to Highway Commercial. A location of this property is east of Holly on the south side of Highway ten. The base zoning district, uh, is Agricultural General. There are not any overlay zoning district, districts. And the request is to rezone from Ag, Ag General to Highway Commercial. So some information about this property, uh, checking with the, uh, both the applicant and the assessor, um, it's always in terms of, uh, the, in assessment history, it's always been assessed as a commercial property. Uh, the original structure was built pre-ordinance in nineteen sixty-five. There were additions in nineteen seventy-five and nineteen ninety-nine. It was historically an electrical, uh, contractor. He ran his, he had a shop and ran his business out of that property. In nineteen ninety-nine, they received a conditional use permit to convert, um, convert it from a non-conforming use to a different non-conforming use, and it became Blossoms, the, the floral business. Uh, the current business is Car King Auto, and they do, um, like power sports and accessories and things like that. Uh, before I get into this, um, just wanna explain a little bit about non-conformities, because they can be a little bit confusing. You hear people talk about grandfathering in and things like that. Um, and, and grandfathering kinda gets like the blanket generalized, uh, used as a, a generalized term. Um, in, uh, state statute and as well as our code, a non-conformity would be a structure or use. So two distinct things there, a structure or use, uh, or a premises, so three things, which was lawful before the passenger amendment of zoning ordinance or regulation, but is no longer in conformance with existing zoning regulations. So they were, they are allowed to be continued, um, otherwise every time you, there would be no certainty. No one would wanna, you know, do anything on their property if there's a risk of a zoning change or something like that, and all of a sudden you had to stop, do your business or whatever that might be. So they are allowed to be continued, uh, but may not be expanded or intensified in any way. So despite this, um, little regulation about prohibiting the expansion, the previous property owner and the operator of the, the business, they were granted a building permit to expand after they got the non-conformity, the conditional use for the non-conformity. So they did expand in nineteen ninety-nine, this fifteen hundred square feet area kinda in the, the front there. So the applicant would like to continue to rent this property as a retail or a commercial space, um. And reason, what would rezoning would do is it would allow for the property owner to do this, um, without coming back and requesting a conditional use permit each time the business changed. So it'd essentially be, um, each time they'd have to come back, changing a non, non-conforming, for a conditional use permit for a non-conforming use to a new non-conforming use. Um, rezoning to Highway Commercial would allow most uses to be permitted, but really, um, based on the Highway Commercial standards, which there are, you, you know, minimum lot size would have to be the minimum lot area for the required to do the use. Um, there are yard requirements, so you have to have a hundred feet of, of frontage to any public right-of-way. Um, there are front yard regulations about setbacks, rear yard and side yard as well. And then there are a lot coverage regulations, so not more than thirty percent of the area should be occupied by buildings. You gotta have access to a public right-of-way. Uh, most, uh, commercial businesses would not be able to, like, you could not plop a gas station down on this property. It would not meet any of the, the standards that we have in that, just for the Highway Commercial District in general, and then our separate standards. We have separate standards for different types of commercial uses as well. So likely it would just allow it to remain, um, essentially as it is, a small retail business. There's some additional, um, uh, property information. So right now, you've probably seen it driving by Highway nine or U.S. Highway ten, excuse me, um, there are some aspects of the business that are operating outside of the boundaries of the property and on, uh, adjacent right-of-way. So this yard is actually part of a, a right-of-way, looking at all the property records and information that's, um, on file at the county. There's an off-premise sign, there's outdoor, outdoor advertising, uh, and then some product displays as well. Uh, we did not receive any comments from Eglin Township or the City of Holly. We haven't received any public comments. We did receive a letter uh, yesterday from MinDOT with concerns about, um, the operation in, in the, in the right-of-way. Meeting with MinDOT, uh, tomorrow about some of these, um, issues. I did ask for more information. Um, I do have that, that letter, and that can be entered into our, into the part of the record as well. Just some considerations for rezoning. It would bring the use of the property into compliance, but the structure itself would remain non-conforming, just because it doesn't meet those setback standards. And so really, if, uh, tornado or something were to come through and damage this property, it would have to be built basically to meet, rebuilt to meet those setback standards and all other standards of the Highway Commercial, um, district. Also, um, this rezoning is only for this property. It's not for any other, the right-of-way or anything like that, so, um, everything that's not on the property that's related to any commercial business would have to be relocated to the property. Another consideration is looking at the City of Holly. Uh, this is from their, um, comprehensive plan. Uh, cities do, uh, growth plans, and as part of their growth plans, they have, can they kinda map out where their future land uses might be located within, uh, their community as they grow. So the red here in Holly is designated as commercial, um, and this property would be located right here, and it would be according to the future land use plan of Holly. If they were ever to annex this property, it would be zoned commercial. So this rezoning request would be compatible with that. Uh, from our twenty forty-five comprehensive and transportation plan goals and objectives related to this request, we do have a goal to encourage commercial and industrial development that is in harmony with the agriculture and rural character of the county. Response to that would be that this property is in close proximity. The City of Holly has a long history of being a commercial property and is a more developed area of the county. Uh, we have an objective under that to promote value-added agricultural, commercial and industrial development in ag service centers areas and along transportation corridors and hubs, and this property is along U.S. Highway ten, which is a major transportation corridor through the county. Uh, there aren't any, uh, we also have an objective to avoid or mitigate against commercial and industrial development in and near environmentally sensitive areas. This would not apply to this request. We do have also an objective to avoid or mitigate against commercial and industrial development that increases the pot- potential for land use conflicts with rural residential or agricultural uses. Um, we have not received any complaints that I'm aware of about this property. Um, it does have a long history of, of commercial use. I think, though, that the current use is probably a little more visible than, um, when it was an electrical contractor shop. Um, I know the, the floral business was also pretty visible as well. Have not received any complaints on that. The property, the size of the property and the non-conformity of the structure would have to limit those you, future uses to small-scale commercial. Uh, would not, could not, um, create any nuisances as well, um, to, uh, the, the neighborhood. Any questions for me at all?
So in our packet, you put, I don't know if it's you or the applicant, but the property tax statement shows it's been taxed as commercial?
Yes, and I did check with the assessor on that, and, and she pulled all the records, um, going back to at least, yeah, as far as she could go. And it's always been.
Always been taxed as commercial.
Commercial property.
Anybody else have any questions, Matt?
I guess my question would be, um, you know, how do we, um, insulate the people that live right behind them? There is a difference between an electrical contractor and a floral shop, and now this place with all the vehicles and stuff. Um, it's very close to the next resident.
To the, yeah, to the resident, just, um, to the, to the west?
To the south.
Or to the south. You're with me here.
I think they're closing one to the west.
I guess it would be the south and the west.
So for example, for parking, there are requirements for fencing, screening, um, that way. So for parking, parking, there would be a, a screening requirement that we have as a standard for parking for commercial, um, commercial businesses. The other, I guess, option would be, you know, if that was, if that was a, a concern and the planning commission did want more oversight on, um, this would be to keep it as a conditional use. And so that would be to recommend just denying the rezoning request and just going forward with, uh, a conditional use permit. Um, that would still keep both the use and the structure would be non-conforming, but they would just be able to essentially continue. Um, they just couldn't be expanded or intensified in any way. One of the, kind of the rationales, I think, for doing, proposing the rezoning is, well, immediately after the original conditional use permit was granted, there was a permit granted to expand it. So it's already been expanded, um, which kinda makes it difficult, but I think if you were to start from, you know, today, if you wanted to do it that way, you certainly could.
Oh, is your mic on?
Tea and them are gonna be having a conversation about that right of way, or is that not, is that a non-issue? I know it's not to do with our permit, but it, if I'm just.
I don't think it would necessarily impact the rezoning of the property, but just how the right-of-way is used, which right now it can't be used for.
Designed in the parking.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes. So this whole area up here.
Right. So I'm just saying, if that happens, and I, I'm, you know, want this to succeed if we can, then he's got it, or this business needs to find other parking that meets our criteria on that same space.
Yeah, essentially, they would have to be moving probably all their display and stuff down here. Yeah, essentially. It's just not a, it, it can only support, I mean, the, the, the property can't support a big business. Is what it comes down to.
Question, um, is there, you know, like, as far as, you know, light pollution, noise, uh, you know, is there like a set hour, you know, since it, you know, possibly rezoning that Highway Commercial, like, uh, you know, business hours, you know, like we do, you know, our mining permits, you know? You know, if the, if residential neighbors, if that's, uh, you know, nobody said there's an issue today, but maybe there would be, you know, you know, some kind of a noise, you know, or hours of operation. You know, can you limit that, or is there anything that you could do to possibly, you know, if there was some kind of a complaint in the future, like, so, you know, nothing's going on at ten o'clock at night, you know?
Yeah.
Just thinking outside the box.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Eldred, that's a, that's a great question to bring up. That would be, uh, more difficult to regulate if the property were to be rezoned Highway Commercial. If the, the planning commission recommend denying that, um, but then allowing the applicant to proceed with a conditional use permit to, um, convert the business from one non, non-conforming use to another non-conforming use. Um, I suppose what could be done is, we do have, um, just commercial use as a use in our use table. Right now, the permit reads very specifically that it's electrical shop to a floral business. So if the, if the new permit would be a floral business to a commercial business, and then you just put conditions, you could, you could put conditions on it that way relative, related to a commercial business essentially. The, that option, the can, the conditional use permit option, as was done in nineteen ninety-nine, would, would give the planning commission more uh, oversight over mitigating some of those, um, potential issues that could arise in the future.
Dave?
Question. West property line, it looks like it's running through some structure. Is that just the, is that a garage or house, or what is that?
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair and, um, Mr. Stike, in the, the pro, the GIS lines, um, these are essentially representations. They're not just, they're not survey-grade lines at all. They don't quite match up with the imagery, so, um, they're just best used as an approx- approximation, um, and so.
That wasn't really, my big question was, this kinda shows the problem with spot zoning. I mean, generally, you get yourself in trouble when you spot zone. Neighbors, other people wanting this and that, and, you know, if there's a big, long stretch, it'd be one thing. Cities get themselves in trouble for spot, wanting to spot zone, and it creates all kinds of problems. And I don't know, like, what Brad was talking about, if that's kinda comes into that or not, but,
Yeah.
I understand why they want Highway Commercial, but just for one small parcel creates issues for the reasons that Mr. Eldred talked about.
Yeah. I mean, and I, I mean, I promote, you know, highway commercial. I mean, this addition was, you know, years ago. You know, and to promote highway commercial along any corridor, you know, along north and south side of Highway 10. That's why I just was talking about this to, to make this happen, just so in the future, you know, there isn't any known issues today with any noise disturbances, light pollution, et cetera, just to have some, some teeth in it to help regulate this piece of property. So this can function as a business in this county.
Anybody else have any questions?
Well, the big advantage would be for the person that owns that parcel, they wouldn't have to keep coming back. They could still operate with the change in operations or different type of business going in.
Yeah, it would bring the use into compliance. The structure would still be a non-conforming structure. That's essentially, I guess, yes. It is, would be technically compatible with the city of Holly's comprehensive plan and their future land use plan for the area. But again, to Mr. Eldred's point, with the highway commercial, most of these types of commercial uses are just permitted uses. They don't require a conditional or an interim use permit. Whereas if you made it less specific and just said, "Commercial," can bring up our use table. Here. So this is our current use table. This is, will be updated with as part of the development code update. We were to go down to commercial and industrial uses in the highway commercial. Some of these two have their own separate standards that are contained in a different chapter in our code with regards to setbacks and, and things like that. You could just go, a retailer or commercial business is considered a permitted use in the highway commercial district. Because it's on the use table, you could just essentially do a, and this is, would be not related to this root ball, would be another option from this rezoning request. It would be to recommend denial of the rezoning request to the Board of Commissioners, and then the applicant could come back for a conversion of one non-conforming use to another. So conforming the floral shop just to a retail or a commercial business, that would still be a non-conforming use. So the structure or the use could not be expanded or intensified in any way. It would basically allow it to continue to exist essentially at as is, might be more appropriate for this property, just because of the size of the property and the location of the property. And the planning commission would be able to, you know, better address some potential conflicts that might come up with regards to noise and aesthetics and lighting and things like traffic and hours and things like that. That, that would be another option. And now say it's Car King Auto today and it goes back to being a floral shop in five years. Well, if it falls under that retailer or commercial business definition, they would not need to come back for a new permit. It just couldn't get any bigger than it currently is in terms of the size of the business. And then yeah, just the intensity of, of the business, which is very subjective and open to interpretation. So, and I would to note about the, your point on spot zoning is it is illegal in Minnesota to do spot zoning, though it's very subjective as to what constitutes spot zoning and what doesn't. And, and so that's why it's happens occasionally. It's because there's no good way to define precisely what it is. Very variable and, and situation specific.
Just to be clear, we are making a recommendation to the county board.
Yes, correct. This, the county board would make.
The ultimate.
Yep.
Decision.
And my question, in realizing that the G I S isn't accurate, but so who is responsible? Everything says mayor could regarding the right of way. Is Mr. Manthy responsible for hiring the surveyor and finding out where the right of way begins and ends? Or is the D O T? Will that be something in the letter that you're getting tomorrow?
Um.
Who's responsible?
That is all platted out. So it's already, I mean, it's already platted out. So we know essentially could find, and Mr. Manthy has found the pins and knows where the, yep. So it is, it is a platted. It is platted. There is.
Just speak.
There is two right of ways. There is essentially, this is one right of way right here. This is part of a separate lot that's owned by Mr. Manthy. That's also part of the subdivision. And.
Hey, just hang on. That's the piece that he's.
According to the, according to the meets and bounds description of what that lot is. Then this is the state right of way. So it comes down right here and over. So there is, you know, it's, it's the right of way in this area is very comp, it's complicated. That would be, but really to our request does not really pertain to, the request doesn't pertain to that right of way. It really only pertains to this property right here.
My only question is, if we give them this, it seems like we lose even more control. I mean, they've already been given probably things we shouldn't have given them on that property. I mean, I drove by that the other night. There's little vehicles all over and they don't show here on these pictures, but there's a lot going on there. More than I would want in my neighborhood, as close as it is, you can see right next.
You have a house right here. And this would be the right of way.
That though.
Even now. Yeah. This is from the fourth of October.
I drove by it. I was just heading to a volleyball game and I went, what is that?
Would the applicant like to come up and speak? Come on up and state your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Scott Manthy and I'm the property owner. I also own the, the property adjacent Auditors Lot 24 and which Matt explained, I own the, the land as part of that auditor's lot. Because what happened? I can give you a little history on what I, what I know or what I've been told is originally the owner owned all the land in the quarter and they kept piecing out pieces and, and selling them to people that wanted to live in the Holly area, but didn't want to live in town. And so he would, the Alvin family, I believe, would be the one that sold the pieces off. And it's the same gentleman that had the gravel pits. And I think he opened the gravel pit up to the right. If I'm not mistaken, I'm not sure on the whole history. I moved into the area in 2012 and bought the, the land where his pointer is right there, Auditors Lot 24 from the Kelly family who were Lance and Mary Kelly were Warren Kelly's wife was an Alvin. And so she inherited or bought the land from her parents, who were the gravel people. And I believe the Alvins were the ones that sold off the lots and created the, the development there just as a meets and bounds legal description, not as a, a lot. You know, when you bought land, you bought so many feet by so many feet, by so many feet, by so many feet. And in 1996, Matt, I believe they did an auditors subdivision and created lots to the auditor's subdivision because they wanted to tie all the meets and bounds descriptions together because there were some discrepancies. And I believe Kurt that the, when you look at the line for the garage there on the neighboring west property, the gentleman who subdivided, did the subdivision, I believe it was Rob Roberts. He had the line through the neighbor's garage and they had to actually deed, people that owned the, the lot before me had to deed additional feet over to accommodate them having their garage on their property. And so I think all Argals who did the floral shop, I believe actually deeded that property over to them to get, so they had the house and garage within their, their property boundary. But when I bought the land and had the title opinion, had Barb Delaney at Clay County Abstract, when she did the work for preparing the abstract, she said that I owned the land in front of the houses up to the right of way there for Highway 10 and the access to the, the road there. So it was my belief that I owned all the lot, land in front of the flower shop as well. And so I, I bought the land there in 2012 where my house and the, the other buildings are. And then I bought the Blossoms Flower Shop in 2016, as far as the timeline goes. So I had the Auditors Lot 24 planned before I had the Blossoms Flower Shop parcel. And I thought it tied in really good because then it all came together. And you can see there that originally Robert, Rob Roberts had 110 foot wide right of way there drawn in the original plat. And I requested that the board vacate a portion of that. And I don't know if Matt, if you have the other slide showing that. But they vacated a portion of it to line up so that the whole right of way is 66 feet rather than narrower than 66 and then wider up to 110 feet. Because if you took the legal description that they, that Rob Roberts drew, it went through the corner of the, the building. And I had that done prior to purchasing the property because it cut, cut off the corner of that 30 by 50 addition. And in the request to build the 30 by 50 addition by Argals for Blossoms, they said this, the county person came out and verified the legals. Apparently that didn't happen because the pin would have been right in the left, the left-hand side would have cut the, cut the corner of the shop off. So the township created a right of way that was six, consistently 66 feet all the way through. And therefore cleared the building out of the right of way like it should have been. And so if you go to the top of the drawing there, that shows where the Auditors Lot 24 goes. And so that land is part of my Auditors Lot 24 there. I had thought I owned the chunk in front of the blossoms as well because normally the, the owner adjacent to the right of way owns to the center line. And so I'm the owner on the north side and on the, what, I'm south of the northland that I have. And so, and east of the, or west of the east right of way. So there's nobody else in between me and the right of way to the east. And so normally that's owned by the, the property. So I don't, I think there's a gap in Rob Roberts survey that I think that's partial to the north and I haven't had time to, since Matt and I discussed it, to go have it legally researched to verify that. But normally the property adjacent to the right of way owns to the center line of the road, which would be over 33 feet from where the right pin is. And so after the vacation, the, I have a, just a rough picture. I don't know if you want to look at where I estimated where the, the pins are that I've physically located. I don't have the survey. But I drew those in black where, because the G I S map isn't lined up and that's causing some of those issues with the garage to look. You can see that parcel on the left-hand side is the part in that square right there. That was a part that was deeded off as a separate lot to, to go with the house to the west. And that was, I think, done by Argals to allow them to have the line not go through the garage. And so that east line of that lot is not in their garage still. It's over in between the, the build, our building and the neighbor's garage. And so everything is shifted to the east and that property pin up on the north is actually in the gravel. And the apron of the house, building is outside of the right, the current right of way. And so if I would have known that they, that I didn't own the land to the front, I would have requested additional vacation of the right of way with the remaining easement there. And if you look where the, the current road goes to service those two houses, it's partially in the state right of way and partially in that other right of way that was set up on the auditor subdivision was created. And like I said, there's been gaps in Rob Roberts' work there that we found as evidenced by the sub lot A and the wider road there. And I think it got missed that that property, property out front be included with the land because a right of way isn't ownership of the land. It's just basically an easement. And so the, the land underneath should be owned by somebody. And I mean, that, to me, that, I think that was a gap. And so as far as the description of what happened, you know, that's kind of how it worked in the timeline. And then, you know, I've always been taxed as a, as a commercial property and I've really bought the land. I was initially going to put my own business in there. I have a crop insurance business and I was going to look at locating there. And my son is coming into the business now with me and he is debating whether to, you know, relocate it. He, he's not, he's just getting started. So he doesn't know when he potentially do that. But someday he may use that to run the crop insurance business out of. Currently we do that out of our home base and the that doesn't require a lot of area or whatever. And so in the meantime, I decided to rent the building out when we first bought it. I rented to somebody that bought the flower shop part of the business and I own the building. She couldn't afford to buy the building and the business. So I bought the building and the lot and she ran the business and rented from me. And so I kind of looked at it as a business incubator for the, the small town. Because currently Levi and Kristen that have Car King Auto, they wouldn't be able to afford to buy the building, but they can afford to rent from me. And so I look at kind of my wife and myself as being business incubators. We also have another business in town where the Car King Auto was also located. And again, there, they wouldn't be able to buy it, but they can, they do well enough to rent it. And I think they've done a good job. They cleaned, they cleaned up some of the things that I had on my cleanup list to do right when they moved in there. And I think he does have some cars out on, on the backside. They tries to keep behind the building. And, but I, they are works in progress. He, he's a mechanic by trade. And so they do fix up some of the items that they sell as far as cars go. And then some of the ATVs and things that come in, they do a lot of setup in the, in the garage stall. I have the back stall of that garage there is currently my stuff in there. So that's not being used by them. It's just a storage garage for mine. And and I, I always thought it was already commercial, so I didn't need to bring a separate request for another commercial business in there. And that's my end goal is I'd like to be able to continue to rent to people. Hopefully they're long-term renters, but you never know. And to me, you got to have a place for these smaller businesses to go. And that's what we're trying to accomplish is to allow an opportunity for them to, to be in the area. I know Levi and his wife that they live in Hitterdale, so they're Clay County residents as well. And to me, if you don't have something for people like that, that are entrepreneurial, they'll likely go to a different county or Becker or Cass or something like that. So to me, I think it's important to have businesses like that that are available for those folks to, to do business in.
Does anybody have any questions?
So, Mr. Chair, I just have some clarifications on.
So Mr. Chair, I just have some clarifications on that. Right now in our tax parcel system, this is a platted right of way. So platted right of way, different than an easement, it's owned by the township. Like this is owned by the state of Minnesota, it's not an easement, it's actually platted. This would be owned by, this would be a township road essentially, if I could click on it. So it would be owned by someone, in this case it'd be owned by the government unit, the township. The second just clarification I want to make here is with regards to that, this access right here. I can't determine ownership, that would require an attorney to determine ownership if there's ownership that's in dispute. And the county does not get into that, that's purely a civil thing. It's, I should just clarify that this is, was just included as part of the meets and bounds description of that lot. Doesn't mean that it wasn't sold or conveyed or something at one point or another. So if there is any question about ownership and it's not clear, don't want to, get into, the county does not want to get into that at all. The third thing is that this request is solely for this lot right here. Really does not matter what's going on outside of this, this lot. Also, if there are vehicles that are being sold here, like automobiles, that would not fall under the, the commercial or retail business use. It would definitely be an expansion. That's something that we have as a separate use in our Clay County list use table. If you recall, we did do the permitting of the downer auto. That was not permitted as a retailer or commercial business, that was permitted as a completely separate use. So any auto work or repair or anything like that, sale of cars would not fall under that commercial use and would not be, could not be allowed as part of that as well. If they're selling cars, yeah, yeah. That's kind of a gray area.
Well, I'm hearing, I just wanted to be clear because when you were talking commercial use, to me, that sounds nice and clean and, and that I thought maybe we should pursue. But now you're saying if it would be commercial, what he's doing there wouldn't be allowed?
Just because we have it as a, as a separate use in our use table, we have.
So if he went to the, the other use, commercial use, he applied for that?
Automobile, truck, trailer, garden, farm, equipment sales is kind of, that would be, we allow it as an interim. It would essentially, it would have to just be basically specifically for that. And it would, could not be more intense or expanded beyond what the previous use was, which was a floral shop essentially. And that's where it gets a little murky with that.
Darn, I thought that was going to be the answer. But I, you know, if I may ask, so what was the motivation for the change?
Strict motivation from changes, the, the person within the flower shop couldn't afford the, the rent or she wasn't wanting to have that much space. She felt, felt it was too much space for her. And so they went to a smaller space in town. And since then I've had it available for rent. I think it was available for rent for over a year with, with rent signs. And we kept it mowed up and stuff like that. And I had, had had really good luck with the renters in town. And they had talked about having these ATVs out there. And I know he does the, the car repair there, you know, or car repair in Holly. And I said, well, maybe this would be something where you could do the setup of the ATVs. And if you had light car repair there, you could do that there too. There's not, nothing as far as cars sold there, that all gets done out of the place in Holly. It would only be some light repair stuff there. I think they wash them there and clean them there and then drive them to town is what happens there. And then the, it's mostly the power sports side of things that they're looking at doing out there.
So back to, and then I'll be quiet here, but I just, so to me, I, so the way it is now, every time there's a different use, he's got to come in again.
Well, just based on that piece of information, depending on how, we do have a provision in here, and this is also in state statute, where if a non-conforming use is discontinued or abandoned for more than a year, for a period of one year, for further use of the structure shall conform to the ordinance. So essentially then, if it's truly been a year since the, between uses, could not even issue a conditional use permit to go from one non-conforming use to another. Any use would have to be in compliance with what, with the ordinance.
But we, we should go to a commercial use as non-conforming?
If it can be demonstrated based on that information that Mr. Mathie just provided. If it's been, if the floral business ended and the new business, it was over a year before a new business was established in there, then it just has to be in compliance with the agricultural general. It would be, it would have to conform with the agricultural general zoning district.
And but he's asking.
But he's asking for rezoning recommendations.
Commercial.
To highway commercial.
Highway commercial, that's what he's asking for.
Yes.
Even with that 12 months, maybe or maybe not.
You could still do that, yes.
Still asking for a recommendation to the county board.
Correct, correct. That's what we're here for tonight.
Well, we are, but we can also deny if we found a way on a commercial use, we could make it work for them. I want this to work for them. That's why I'm asking.
Yep. Anybody else have any questions for Scott at this time, Mr. Mathies?
Yep, you, one more thing to say?
So I wanted to visit on Brad's comment about light control and things like that. We actually have the light for the light pole there. And it's 11 bucks a month. And if the residents don't want it there, it, the township doesn't provide any light at that intersection. So it's kind of like a, a light for the entrance, to be honest with you, and the snow removal. A lot of times Burnside's live in that development. He, with Celine Brothers pushes the snow for the development. And a lot of it gets pushed on to my lot there in the grassy area, right under the, the light. And so it almost acts like a street light for the development. And so I think it's more of a benefit than a negative, to be honest with you.
I think Mr. Chair, the concern is if a new business were to come in and throw up a bunch of new lights, lights, displays, things like that, not what's currently existing, no.
Thank you, Scott. Anybody in the audience?
Two.
State your name for the record, please.
Hi, I'm, and of course I have stuff to say and was prepared, but now this discussion has gone so sideways, I don't even know where to start, so. Oh, I'm sorry, we live, we're just right self, sorry, we're just south of his shop. And first of all, let me say, I also understand why commercializing Highway 10 businesses is great for tax base and shopping and all that stuff. I, I just want to remind you that there are like 20 homes up there. It's still a residential neighborhood and we're just living our lives. And we've had a quiet neighborhood, we've had quiet businesses there. We've been there for over 30 years. I'd love to speak about the surveying, we've had that surveyed three times because of mistakes made in surveying. I'd just soon not have to pay for that again. We, we appreciate that people should be able to do with their land what they wish. We also appreciate when people are considerate of their neighbors and the way things are now. I can't live 20 years in the future, I live there now. We try to be good neighbors, we try to keep our property looking nice. Last week I counted 30 vehicles on that tiny little lot. And to do that, they had to be parked right up to our trees. I hate to say it, but it, it's kind of a junky looking area. And I realize that the goal is commercial, I realize that's supported. But I, I would ask that you just remember that not all of us think that that is an improvement at this place and time for the way we live. And if I could move, I would. I guess there's a few other things that I'm concerned about. But I think for the sake of time, I just, I just would ask that you remember that it's a residential neighborhood. It's not just the traffic, it's not just the appearance, it's the whole feel of a place when you, you know, right next to my shed, there, there were 30 cars parked in that little lot. They were, it was like a slider puzzle. We can coexist, but I think that there has to be some mutual cooperation in that. And I don't think that giving a blank slate here is, is a good idea. Again, I do support people following their, their dreams, I really do. But my dream is to live there in comfort and peace while I still live there, so.
Thank you for coming in, thank you.
My name is Greg Kraus and I live in the same house that Lori does. The only thing I'm concerned about, it's America, you can do whatever you want with your land. But what happens if he brings in something that's going to put in powerful lights? Do we need a fence in that area? I mean, I'm looking at snow fences of cars now. And some of these cars are not even drivable. They're, they're junk stuff that he buys at Junk's and takes pieces off, brings them to town and puts them together. Why did he move all them cars from Holly outside the city limits? Did Holly put a kibosh to that? I'm not, I don't know. It just seems kind of funny why he would move just the cars and the motorcycles out there. And another thing with the motorcycles, we have little kids that are test driving these motorcycles going up and down that township road. And there's going to be an accident because we're not used to that traffic. You know, it's a dead end road. And so that's a concern of mine also. Like I said, he can put whatever he wants there, but I just want some kind of barrier or whatnot. And we know where the pins are, I've talked to Scott on where the pins are, we know where the property lines are. Trees couldn't go up, it would cut more of the property off that he has already. So a nice privacy fence along our property and along the property on the west side of the business would be nice. That's all I can really say about it because he's put up storage units, he's taken away my view that I had for 25 years. I mean, is the property value going to drop because of all this development? I don't know. And as far as Holly coming up in that area, we are told no, because they got to put up a water tower to get up to that area, to develop that area. And that's why they're going the other direction with their development. So, I mean, whatever he wants to do, I just hope it doesn't have a lot of lights and we can clean up some of them cars so we don't start getting mice or skunks or who knows what's going to be living underneath them. He does move a lot of them, but there's maybe nine of them that have been sitting there since he started, so. And he is cooperative, I asked him to move his cars out of the right of way and he did. He immediately moved them to the offset of the property, they weren't in the right of way of the road. So he is a nice fella that's working there. It, it's just, he likes to buy things. You know, he goes to these car auctions and the other day they pulled in eight of them at one time. You know, so he's a wheeler and dealer, so. But like I say, I'm just concerned about the, the light pollution and the appearance. So if we ever do want to sell, you know, are the neighbors going to say, oh, you got a nice fence there between, you know, a barrier if it's going to be something else a year down the road? And it was, there was something in there between the flower shop and this motorcycle shop. It was a craft store that was there a year, so it did not sit empty a year. I don't know how long it sat empty. It again? Was it a year that the craft store wasn't there, okay. But he didn't, you know, we didn't mention the craft store was in there in betweens.
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks for listening.
Mr. Chair, one thing I will to add about, just about the highway commercial is like outdoor storage accessory to a commercial use in the highway commercial zoning district, that is one use that would be regulated through a conditional use permit. So that's something that even if it were to be rezoned to highway commercial, that if there is going to be any outdoor storage or display of anything like that, it, it would have to come before the planning commission. That, to have a conditional use permit where things like lighting and the, limiting the amount of things stored outside too and screening, those are all things that could be addressed as a conditional use. So that is a potential possibility as well. So again, with highway commercial with some things, a lot of things are permitted. But if you're doing any outdoor storage or display, that is a conditional use likely for the reasons that you brought up originally, Mr. Aldred. So this is another thing to consider.
Well, can we put, what he wants is highway commercial, that gives him the most flexibility, I'm guessing?
On some stuff.
On some, do we have some power to control some stuff?
If they want to have outdoor storage.
Anything outdoor would, yes, would be, if it's outdoor accessory to the commercial, yes, that would have to have a conditional use permit.
When you mentioned expanding, what, what mean? It's probably quite subjective, but expanding the business, is that taking on motorcycles or four-wheelers or car repair? What, what does expanding really mean?
It's very subjective, it's looking at the property history. I mean, if you look at when it was a floral store, I mean, it was, there was some outdoor. And there's really not a lot of room for outdoor display. It sounds like there's way more currently on there based on the testimony provided by the public at this meeting, there's way more out there than probably what this property can handle. And that's where you would be able to regulate that through that conditional use permit for the outdoor storage.
Just outdoor activity is an expansion in itself versus.
Depending on what the previous use was, so.
If it was craft or floral, that's pretty much inside of a building, right?
There were, I know there was some outdoor stuff too. But again, too, when the electrical shop, which is mainly inside, was, there's a conditional use permit to, to issue for a floral business and now there's more stuff outside. Again, it's, 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 it's not, the non-conformities are, can be difficult because it's really hard to look back in time at any given time and see how it's, how it's changed without a lot of, of evidence, I guess.
To address their concern about activity going up and down the roads and whatever. Do we, is that allowed, what you're doing? I mean, motorcycle testing up and down the road and, I mean, you got one hand, you give them quite a bit of flexibility, and the other hand, we want a lot of controls. Where in the middle would be a good meeting point?
We really can't from the planning commission regulate necessarily what happens on the, on a public right of way. You can really only regulate kind of what happens on the property.
Well, what happens on the property spills over into the right of way.
Yes, yes. And this is a case where if you have an auto, power sports or whatever, I'm assuming these are those little motorcycles. Yeah, that would have an impact on that.
So.
That could be considered an intensification if you're looking at it from.
Is that a better word than expansion, intensification?
I would say so because you don't have in a floral or craft business, people using the right of way like that.
What if they wanted to do something, they do cars and motorcycles, little four-wheelers? What if they wanted to add something else, whatever it might be, I don't know what it would be. As it stands, can they just keep doing those things?
Well, I think right now, the, again, just to bring us back, the request is for the rezoning request. It sounds like this property sat vacant for a year. So I think then, based on our code and state statute, even considering going from one non-conforming use to another conforming, a non-conforming use is now out of the question.
Right?
Yeah, if it's truly sat for a year, it's been discontinued, use has been discontinued or abandoned for a year, it is no longer an, an option. So it would really, we'd need to verify what that is. So really, again, just getting back to the. So it would really, we'd need to verify what that is, so really, again, just getting back to the request for the rezoning. Making a recommendation to. The Board of Commissioners. On whether you want, would want to recommend the rezoning or not recommend the rezoning.
I'm and I think we should. Grant the rezoning, which brings it into conformity and then. The business owners need to come in for a cup and then. We dot the Ts and cross the Is in the in the conditional use permit. That's one of the two bits.
Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to speak? Anybody in the audience that wishing to speak? The applicant, if you want to speak one more time, come up to the microphone, please.
I just wanted to verify if if you need to know the timeframe on that. Time period where it wasn't, I can get you that, I'm, it was around a year, I don't know if it was exactly a year or under, just under or over. But I can get you that timeframe if you need that, if that makes a difference, I don't think it'll make a difference in the actual quest, will it, Matt?
No, but it would be good to know.
Okay, so you need that, I can get that for you.
The other thing too with. Commercial uses is there are parking limitations as well and parking standards that would need to be followed as.
As many parking spaces and.
Yep.
And I, Levi, the person there right now, when he. Initially agreed to rent it, we had talked about whether we wanted to do fencing or not, some people don't like fencing because it. Additionally cuts off the view, but I mean, I I don't know that we'd be opposed to some fencing on the side that. You know, Greg's on.
If you make it quick, Greg, I'll let you come up and speak.
Now, on this, to police this area, who's going to be responsible for counting every car? Every week, is that you guys, is that the neighbors, is that the property owner, is that the person that's renting it? To make sure he's in compliance with with this zoning?
So what we are doing today is making a recommendation to the county board to make it commercial.
Correct.
To run a business out of there, it depends what type of business he wants to run out of there, if you need a conditional use permit or not. What you would have there now, you'd have to come back and get a conditional use permit. To be able to have outdoor things out there and at that point, then it would be up to planning and zoning to make sure he. Falls in line with the conditions that are set at that time.
And then do us as neighbors or concerned citizens get a report on what the? The county commission is going to allow this to be?
Well, as a, we would make a recommendation to the county board, they would hold another public hearing, Matt, correct? And you'll be notified at that time when that public hearing is going to be.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, just to address concerns about with with permit violations too. If, you know, we are doing regular checks, which this is property is a fairly easy one to do just because it's, you know.
Drive by it on.
Yeah, if there are a number of instances where there's repeated violations, it would come right back to you. Yeah, planning commission told a hearing on revoking the permit.
So I'm going to ask one last time, anybody in the audience want to speak on on this matter? Hearing none, anybody else having questions for Matt or the applicant before we close the public hearing? Do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion, motion made by Joel, second by Brad, all in favor, single by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, public hearing is now closed, we will go to findings and facts in order. Read the bullet points. Right on this.
And again, if you, this is just, this is based off of just the the draft responses to these findings of fact were based off of. Information prior to this hearing, so if any of you want to make modifications. To this, I would highly recommend doing so for each of these.
Then we're making a recommendation to the county board.
Correct.
Number one, effective use in granting a zoning district amendment, the planning commission shall consider the effect of proposed use upon the health. Safety, morals, general welfare of occupants of surrounding lands, existing and anticipated land uses, traffic conditions, including parking facilities. On adjacent streets and land and the effect on agricultural usage of and values of property and scenic views. In the surrounding areas and the effect of the proposed use on existing comprehensive plans. Matt, do you want to read what staff came up with prior to?
Yes, so this property has a twenty year history being assessed as a commercial property and has likely been a commercial. Property for a longer period of time as there's never been a residence on the property, there's no record of complaints against the property. Or past businesses that are operating on, have been operating on the property. A commercial use would require a minimum of eight parking spaces based on the size of the building and Clay County parking requirements, there may also be some issues. With the placement of products and a sign in the planted right of way and not on the property, a portion of the concrete. Slab in the front of the building may be on the right of way as well, we can remove that from. Here as we have found out that that is not the case, these issues would need to be addressed. There may also be vehicle repair occurring on site, this would need to be confirmed, it sounds like, yes, it's potentially happening. Because the property isn't a residential area, the rezoning must not create any new nuisance in the form of noise, odor, dust, vibrations, pollution. Lighting or glare, Mr. Chair, I think based on the discussions here today, I think it would be. Maybe pertinent to note that any outdoor activity, outdoor storage, any outdoor storage of. Anything related to the commercial business would require a conditional use permit.
I'd add that. Number two, additional findings, in addition, and planning commission shall make the following findings, among others, where except accessible. A burden on public utilities, the development authority by rezoning will not create excess burden on any public facilities. Or utilities which serve or propose to serve the area.
So in this case, this is an existing business would not really have any impact on. Any public facilities or utilities.
With the current business that's in there though. Would. Driving those ATVs up and down the gravel road with that.
I would say that you could make that argument, yes, so any. Again, that is also something that's a condition that could be. Put on the.
If they come for.
Outdoor storage, if you're using those vehicles to test drive or whatever, yep.
If they come back for a cup.
Yep, yep.
B, related to overall needs, the rezoning is reasonably related to the overall needs of the county and to the existing land use. Rezoning would be consistent with the existing land use and history of the property as a commercial property. It has been taxed as a commercial property for twenty plus years, correct? E, consistency with the ordinance, rezoning is consistent with the purpose of the ordinance. Of this ordinance and the purpose of the zoning district in which the applicant seeks classification. Want to read that?
Yeah, so the use in the structure on the property are currently considered to be nonconforming uses, rezoning would make the use of the property conforming, however, the structure would remain. Nonconforming as the front, rear and side yard property line setback standards for highway zoning commercial could not be met.
B, conflict with the comprehensive plan, the rezoning is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan. Of any township or city or county or the county land use plan.
So the rezoning of the property from agricultural general to highway commercial would be compatible with the future land use plan of the city of Holly, the city of Holly's future land use map classifies this property as commercial and if and when. If it, when it was to be annexed into the city. As far as the county. Comprehensive plan, there could be some issues because we do have goals and objectives related to conflicts between. Reducing conflicts between residential and commercial and industrial uses.
I mean, it all, it really depends what business goes in there.
It does, if it's a crop insurance business, likely not.
Flower shop.
It's a flower shop, like, that's probably why we haven't heard a whole lot.
Yeah.
Power sports sales business.
Auto repairs. Yeah. I mean, it all depends. E. Prematurely stimulation, public investment in utilities, the rezoning will not either individually or communally stimulate prematurely public investment in the facility. And utility described in subsection D dot two dot A of this section. No new public facilities or utilities will be required resulting from this rezoning. So we are making a recommendation to the county board, which they would have another public hearing at. To rezone this highway commercial. Do you have a motion to make a recommendation?
I make a motion that we approve.
I'll second that. Motion made by Joel, second by Brad, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, single by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Approval to move it on to the county board as a. Yes.
For the rezoning?
For the rezoning, highway commercial. And if you could, when you find out that Dave, you can relay that to the applicant as soon as possible and.
Yes.
You'll have to post that one as well?
Yep.
You have an idea when you would?
I would like to. Discuss with our county administrator, just looking at the upcoming schedule with budgets and thing budget and season and and things like that, just to. Make sure that we can find a public hearing date that would that would meet the statutory. Requirements for making a decision would also meet. Would be, you know, work for the app, for the applicant and then also for the board as well.
Sounds good. Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business, you don't have any to new business, Matt?
Yeah, so I just want to give another update on our development code. We're kind of at the point in our schedule where we're. Having fully flushed out, as I alluded to last month, fully flush out drafts and would like to start. Kind of giving them to you all to review in chunks, so I'm thinking that for a schedule that. For our November planning commission, now depending on what we what we receive in terms of. Applications for requests for permits, would like to look at chapters, review chapters one through four. Of the development code update. And I would be hoping to get that. Information to you, not the Thursday before the meeting, but give you more time to review it, so as soon as kind of we have that. Could potentially at the latest, I would say it would be the eighth. So Friday, the eighth, that would give you about a week and a half just to review that information. And then would like to have, would have a public hearing, but more of a discussion on on those first four chapters. And then in December, do the chapters five through eight, now eight is the definition, so it shouldn't, you know, be that. Difficult to go through that, but December, do do five through eight, I know that the Board of Commissioners has. Kind of indicated and and Commissioner Krabenhoff can correct me if I'm wrong, that they would like to have kind of a work group session. On the entire code at some point, looking at maybe potentially January for that. Yeah. Yep, and then, you know, depending on what you all as a planning commission want to do, if you want to. What we could do then is that our. Our January or February planning commission meeting. We would review the code again in its entirety. And then make a recommendation for enactment. To the county board of commissioners, so potentially could have a code enacted. By February of twenty twenty five. I think it's very, very doable. And then March, if there's, you know, things come up like snowstorms and things like that, so. Kind of hard to think about at this point, snowstorms, but.
Not going to happen.
Okay.
Can you give us that as a red line? Or is that, or is that?
The way that it's so.
I know we moved this to here.
That's what would be tricky about it is that things have shifted in terms of where where it's located. We do have track change versions, which can be difficult to follow, but at least you can kind of see what was there originally, that's.
Or if there's something that we got rid of completely, can you show that as?
Yes.
Maybe not that, you know, to follow it, if it got moved here to there, but if we got rid of stuff.
Yep, and we can definitely look at all the kind of the major changes as we go through the major changes as well.
Because I mean, there's a lot of paperwork for just one through four and five through eight, I mean, it's a lot to.
Yep. Yeah, it would be, it would be a high level overview and then really, I think that it would be kind of your can responsibility as planning commissioners to. To review it and, you know, bring, come prepared. To that meeting, if you have any specific. Parts or sections or even down to sentences that you want to 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 look at, we can certainly. That'd be an opportunity to to discuss that. Perfect, one thing that I did want to do too is, and I know this is over a year ago when we when we looked at this. Is just in preparation for that, I think it's always important to. Remember going into or whenever you're making a big code update like this. Is to have in your mind kind of the perspectives of. The citizens and residents and business owners in Clay County who would. Fall under kind of the this code, because they, ultimately you want to have. Their input in in shaping it and we had some good input for the comprehensive plan update. And for the development code. I can just walk through just as a refresher, some of this, we did, we. Forty one responses is what we got, we did a lot of advertising for this. But we did get some good responses from the unincorporated areas of the county and then incorporated areas as well. So I can kind of go through some of these. And it's really kind of nice and maybe this is something we can keep doing in the future, it's just kind of like a pulse check on. On our code is every year, kind of just maybe have a survey available like this to. For residents and 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 provide a presentation to to you all. So I know just, you know, it's coming up on nine o'clock, so I'll try and be fast as I go through this, but. We, you know, in the survey had a number of questions related to. Land use and development in Clay County and then here's just kind of some of the, some of the input that we've received. First question we asked was how effective has Clay County been at limiting land use conflicts? Seems like, you know. Of the forty one who answered, I'd say that's looking at somewhat effective is kind of the top one and then neutral kind of being the second there. So this is kind of pertaining to our current code and how it's it's implemented. Another question we asked is. Land use regulations are intended to support individual property owners. Rights to develop while managing the impacts of development to the county as the whole. And what kind of degree of land use regulation should there be in Clay County overall, again, most people looking at moderate regulation that actually kind of lines up with. Our comprehensive plan and looking at trying to be as balanced as possible in terms of. Of development and regulating development in Clay County, I'm not being too. Over heavy handed on the when at one end or just completely wild, wild west on the other. Common sense, I think would be probably another way to say that. We did, a lot of development regulations pertain to setbacks, so we did ask a question about setback requirements to control distance between proposed development and existing development property lines, roads. roads, water bodies, environmentally sensitive areas, and should the land development code include setback requirements? And again, overwhelmingly, yes, but with reasonable flexibility. With regards to, um, the land development code and how it, what it prioritizes, um, in terms of development or protection, uh, we did ask a number of questions about if the land development code should prioritize the protection of natural resources. If it should, um, prioritize, uh, the protection of agricultural land. If it should facilitate the development of renewable energy facilities. Uh, if it should facilitate the development of industrial uses, that would be resource extraction or manufacturing. Um, so you know, gravel mining, things like that, development of commercial business. And if should facilitate the development of residential communities or promote the development of recreational areas, really kind of all across the board here. I think the natural resources one skewed more heavily towards strongly agreeing with that statement. Same with the protection, uh, or same with, uh, renewable energy. As well as, um, commercial businesses. And agricultural land as well. And then I guess also promoting, people love parks and trails and things like that. So, which we currently allow in our development code. And then we have some specific concerns basically that were just kind of, um, free response. Really, I think just basically a lot of this relates to gravel pit regulations, industrial, just, you know, making sure that we have, are enforcing our gravel pit regulations, a lot of answers about setbacks to water bodies being too restrictive. There's only so much that Clay County can do in terms of that, since those are in the state shoreline rules. Protecting prime agricultural land is something that came up quite a bit a, as well. Those are kind of the, the main, the main highlights there. So any questions about this, anything that really surprises you at all or? I'll send this link out to you all. So you have it. So just so you can, you can look at it on, at your own nature as well.
Sounds good.
So, but essentially really, I think what I personally in interpreting this really lines up with what, you know, our comprehensive plan, um, goals and objectives are, which also had a lot of the similar public input engagement as well. And so we just want to make sure that our development code, you know, within the framework of and bounds of state statute, state federal statute. Expresses kind of the desires of the community. I think that's really important to keep in mind. So that's all that I have. Unless there's any other questions.
You go over a rough timeline, uh, the board is going to have a work study, work session, right?
Yep.
That's the next thing that's going to happen?
I think then the, the planning commission, uh, in November, you'd, you'd be reviewing kind of the first half of the code in November. So chapters one through four. And then in December, looking at, at five through eight. Having a work, working session of the board of commissioners in, yeah, in January. Um, and then, um, again, giving you as a planning commission, I know it's a lot of information to digest in just two meetings. So having another opportunity to just look at the entire code in general, also including any comments from the commissioners in that. Um, and then making a recommendation on whether or not to enact, um, to the board of commissioners. Um, and then that would go for a public hearing.
Cause we, we would have a public hearing, right? And then the board of commissioners would have it. So there'd be two public hearings?
Yep.
Or in January or February, planning will have a public hearing and following that, then the board would have a public.
Yep. And the board could choose to have more than one public hearing. You can have as many public hearings as you want. We've already had public input, public hearings, um, for this. That would be ideal. Yes. Yeah. So.
Anything else? You have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made by Brad, second by Ashley. All in favor?
Aye.
Getting adjourned.